Jets or microphone, shall we test?
Uh, Dr. Cordy, we are, we are live.
Uh, there are 105 people attending so far.
I recommend that we give people a couple of minutes just to get through onto the portal and we can begin perhaps at two minutes past.
Okay, that sounds good, Martin.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it's 3:02. Uh, we should start and folks can catch up. Good afternoon and thank you for joining us on this first of its kind virtual town hall meeting for faculty members from the Faculty of Arts and Sciences, the Maroon Saman Faculty of Engineering and Architecture, the Faculty of Health Sciences, the Faculty of Agricultural and Food Sciences and the Sulaiman Asulayyan School of Business. We had a very useful equivalent meeting yesterday with members of the Faculty of Medicine and the Rafi Hariri School of Nursing, not medicine as it was called in your invitations, which I extend my apologies. And I've been looking forward to this opportunity to share the university's assessment of and response to some of our current challenges and to take the opportunity to respond to written questions from you during the second part of the schedule. So I'll speak to you for about 20 to 22 minutes and then we'll open it up for questions. We've divided our time between these two town halls because as you know, while we are all facing challenges in this unprecedented public health emergency, our nursing and medical faculty are on the front lines, putting their own safety first and that of our patients uh first, uh but really in many cases putting their own safety second as they care for the patients and they will continue to do this until the coronavirus pandemic is over. Across the globe, as of Monday, more than 260 health workers, physicians, dentists, nurses, therapists and other care providers have given their lives to help save those of others. In Italy alone, as of Monday, more than 90 clinicians have sacrificed themselves in the line of duty. We do not know at this stage how many of this pandemic's fatalities are health workers, but during the SARS outbreak in 2002, they made up one-fifth of all cases. This is true heroism, put your own life at risk for the sake of others. And it makes me realize how pitifully small our political difference is seen amidst such universal sacrifice, such common humanity. But while our colleagues at the Schools of Medicine and Nursing know they are entering the COVID-19 red zone on a daily basis, every single one of us has a role in this global crisis as citizens who self-isolate to flatten the curve of new infections, as educators entrusted with the nurturing of the next generation of leaders among extraordinary disruption, as researchers pushing the boundaries of knowledge needed to address this and other challenges, and as lifelong learners who are able to flex and adapt to the unexpected. And we've certainly had the unexpected thrown at us over the last six months. I'm not here to sugarcoat the situation. We're in a very difficult place as a country and as a university. The COVID-19 pandemic has not only spread the novel coronavirus around the world, but it has also created a great sense of dread that will have touched nearly everyone. This is not surprising when seemingly anyone from an otherwise healthy teenager, thankfully in rare cases, to a senior might die within two or three weeks of contracting the virus. Even if the mortality is less than 2% or 3% of confirmed cases, each and every one of us must be thinking not only of our own health, but that of our friends, family, our parents, or God forbid, our children. Just early this morning, I heard one of our recent alumni, a young man who graduated less than three years ago, was successfully extubated from the ventilator from Columbia Presbyterian Hospital. He is 22 years old. We've seen how this pandemic can overwhelm the health systems of countries even with the most advanced healthcare. It will not only destroy lives, but also livelihoods. We're already seeing record rates of job losses and businesses closing down, not to mention tremendous stock market volatility. 10 million jobs lost in the United States alone over two year period, 10 million jobs. We are not just presaging a global recession, but the first global depression for nearly a century where negative growth does not just endure through successive quarters, but whole years. The last one, starting in 1929, the Great Depression lasted for 10 years and wrecked countless lives around the world. I do not need to remind you that here in Lebanon, we were already facing a disastrous economic downturn before our first COVID-19 cases were diagnosed in February. A perfect storm of crises in politics, banking, liquidity, national debt, trade balance, corruption, the environment and human displacement because of war and conflict. None of these have gone away just because we are facing an even more existential crisis in the shape of coronavirus. In fact, our pathway out of our economic, financial and political difficulties is now even steeper and much more slippery than ever. In such times, people are looking to AUB to lead by example. We are a community founded on a sense of mission, one that creates world-class education and healthcare to lift society, the whole of society, not just its most privileged members, by making the crucial difference today and investing in a better future tomorrow. I ask you to cast your minds back to a happier time, 2016, our sesquicentennial, when we had the opportunity to look back at some of the crowning moments of AUB's existence in the previous 150 years. Without exception, our most significant interventions came at times of greatest peril for the population of Lebanon and the region, but also for the university itself, whose very survival was at stake then, and it is at stake now. Let's not fool ourselves. The civil war, when our campus stayed open and our services to society continued unabated, especially at the medical center, which treated all sides in the conflict as one of the few genuinely independent and non-aligned entities in the country. We can look further back to the First World War and the collapse of the Ottoman Empire when famine struck Mount Lebanon. We are now entering just such an historic period, a time of peril and sacrifice and the efforts that together we expend today will be writ large in the future histories of AUB in Lebanon. Sir Winston Churchill memorably told Parliament on his appointment as British Prime Minister in the dark days of 1940, "I have nothing to offer but blood, toil, tears and sweat." Five years after her seminal contribution to hospital care during the Crimean War, another great Britain, Florence Nightingale, the founder of modern nursing, wrote to a friend in 1861, and this is the mother of handwashing and modern dental care, "I've had a larger responsibility of human lives than ever man or woman had before. And I attribute my success to this. I never gave or took an excuse. Yes, I see the difference now between me and other people. When a disaster happens, I act and they make excuses." Sir Isaac Newton's first scientific breakthroughs were recorded when he was confined at home from Trinity College, Cambridge during the last outbreak of bubonic plague in England in 1665, 1667. Although he had been far from a model student, Newton spent that anarist, miraculous and fruitful seclusion developing what would become his theories on calculus, optics and the law of gravity. You can understand Churchill's exhortation. Very few of us, I would imagine, came to AUB for an easy ride, nor are we people who make excuses like Lady with the Lamb. And while the odds are perhaps against AUB producing the next Newton, we certainly have the most talented faculty this university has had for some faculty bodies in the world. Because we do not make excuses, we moved in, it must be said, an absence of coordinated leadership from either our government here or the government of the United States to create a CDC and WHO compliant COVID-19 testing and 42-bed care facility in the medical center, which we are calling the Pandemic Evaluation Center. This was established in extraordinarily quick time, 10 days, thanks to some extraordinary coordination across a number of teams, and is now being recognized as a model facility in Lebanon. Here we have to salute the extraordinary work of the Rafi Hariri University Hospital, led by our three-time graduate, Dr. Firas Abiyad, which has made the whole country proud of that facility's ability to cope with the first wave of coronavirus cases. Dr. Abiyad has degrees from the Faculty of Arts and Sciences, the Faculty of Medicine and the Ulayyan School of Business. Building on our experience creating the PAC as well as empowering our COVID-19 team and creating a COVID-19 studio for public engagement all from scratch, we're also looking at ways to transmit our expertise to other parts of the country and supply PPE wherever it is needed in partnership with local and academic institutions across the country. Indeed, everyone in our academic community beyond medicine and nursing are looking ways to help to lessen the impact of a pandemic that will likely be with us until such a time as a vaccine and effective therapy have been developed and delivered worldwide. Our biomedical researchers are proposing investigating treatments of COVID-19 with convalescent sera. Our nursing science researchers are studying the impact on the health of nurses in primary care, hospital settings and public health. Our scholars are focusing on ways to build community resilience and solidarity, adopting a community-based approach to prevent exposure, flatten the curve of the pandemic and help society to rebound as efficiently as possible after the end of this crisis. But the effort is not limited to the disciplines associated with health and human care. The Maroon Saman Faculty of Engineering and Architecture has created a COVID-19 fabrication laboratory, or Fab Lab, for the design, fabrication and validation of PPE and ventilators here in Lebanon. The faculty is working with industry to provide rapid feedback to local, small and medium-sized enterprises and hospital procurement departments on the suitability of locally-sourced materials and products. There's also prototyped the reusable AUB N95 mask, which will help protect medical staff from airborne viruses. At the Faculty of Agricultural and Food Sciences, they are focused on primary resources, security in Lebanon, where water, food and energy were in a state of fragility even before the pandemic. The nutrition department is giving advice about how to stay healthy during the lockdown. FAFS's Environment and Sustainable Development Unit has led by distributing Muni boxes with essential supplies for vulnerable rural families and seedlings to small holding farmers. Our biologists and mathematicians are modeling the spread of the virus, while our business school is looking to address loss of income and optimize the new working environment that the lockdown has created with its opportunities and its pitfalls. And faculty members throughout the university have been working on delivery of technology-assisted teaching so our students can stay at home and stop the chain of transmission through our community. As of this morning, the provost informed me that we have more than 33 unique projects on COVID-19 being worked on by faculty members. Not everyone at AUB is working on COVID-19. Many of you have focused on delivering the best possible teaching, research and service under conditions more daunting than those any have experienced in more than 40 years. Many of you are stuck in your homes, away from your students, your research and your colleagues, away from this university you've dedicated your careers and in some cases your lives to. And yet, while you may think that the only heroes are those working on COVID-19, think again. If you are helping a student, a family member, a colleague on our faculty or staff survive these dire times, you are engaged in heroic and absolutely vital work. And you are laying the basis for the rebirth of societies whose futures would be that much darker without AUB and its magnificent community of leaders. That has never been more vital because whether we like it or not, the world has profoundly changed forever. At the level of the administration, we've been busy making arrangements to see our community through this period, easing the conditions for grading exams with a pass-no-pass option for undergraduates and graduates, delivering a one-year extension to the tenure clock, which we announced earlier this week. And with the Lebanese banks continuing to control transfers, we're working on substantial alternative avenues to assist faculty members with financial obligations or dependents outside of Lebanon. We've also launched the AUBMC Corona Response Fund and, as you all know, the Solidarity Fund. The Solidarity Fund, through the help of our trustees and our generous donors, has raised more than $7 million for student scholarships, $3 million for needy patients, and we've now raised an additional $1 million for testing and care for COVID-19. These are some of the measures that we have taken so far, including postponing commencement on June 5 and 6 so as not to disappoint around 2,000 students with their parents have been dreaming for years of their magical AUB graduation ceremony. Having said that, many challenges remain. How will we continue to work together to support our faculty as they work to improve our technology-assisted education? How do we compensate for the near-universal loss of buying power while still taking in the best and brightest Lebanese, Palestinian, Syrian, Jordanian, Iraqi and international students, especially when many of their parents' economic circumstances have deteriorated dramatically over the last several months? Can we survive and ultimately thrive as an institution that adheres to its universal values while remaining a tier-one research university? All that in a region where COVID-19 has accentuated the already unacceptable disparities in standard of living and quality of life and where the right to happiness, health and freedom of choice are further away than they have been for generations? And what can we do to make AUB sustainable while looking after the dignity and lives of our own community, our students, faculty, staff, alumni and others? We've made some difficult decisions already, but given our resources, many harder decisions lie ahead, hard decisions and serious sacrifices that will be necessary before we come out of the coronavirus crisis and the multiple other crises that our country faces and AUB with it. Some of these sacrifices will be very painful, as they always are in times of upheaval, strife and suffering. But at the same time, like the immortal poet of the Palestinian revolution Mahmoud Darwish said, once said, "We suffer from an incurable malady hope." We shall pass through this disorienting and anxiety-inducing era. We are, after all, members of a community whose existence is founded on the inherent optimism of endeavoring to heal the sick and teach the next generation. Darwish said, "Noani min moradin hu adal al ismuhul amal." So even now, our colleagues who monitor pollution levels in Beirut say that satellite imaging has shown that NO2 levels caused by burning fossil fuels is down 30% during the lockdown. Listen to the sound of bird song populating the trees and rooftops of Beirut for once, for once not drowned out by traffic noise. Lockdown is giving us the opportunity to reflect on our lives and to reach out to others who need our help. Some of us, like Newton in the gardens of Woolsthorpe Manor, may be working in ideas that may define our careers and resonate far beyond our narrow milieu. I'd like to end, as I did during yesterday's town hall, with a passage from Theodore Roosevelt's Citizenship in a Republic speech delivered at the Sorbonne on April 23rd, 1910. It is not the critic who counts, not the one who points out how the strong stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the one who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs because there is no effort without Today, we are all in the arena, teacher and pupil, doctor, nurse and patient, citizen. The worthy cause is ours, and I know you will make us prouder than ever before of your valiant efforts to see this great university and the people who depend on it through these difficult times. Like all tests of character, we shall emerge from this one stronger, more collaborative and collegial, knowing that we have given our best when our faces are marred by dust and sweat and blood. Thank you. I'll be happy to take questions. The questions will be fielded by our moderator, Martin Asser, who is our Associate Vice President for Communication.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Cordy. Um, uh, we have, uh, there's about six questions in so far, two from, uh, uh, faculty members and four we have from the Faculty United Group. Uh, I'll begin with FUN, if that's all right.
Sure.
Does the university have any plans to adjust salaries to counter the imminent currency devaluation contemplated by the government and creeping inflation?
Uh, so, in fact, we do have plans to try, as I indicated in my town halls in December, to help those who need it the most, starting with students and certainly rising to faculty members. Uh, we have to also look at what our revenues are going to be. The assumption is, if there continues to be a lockdown, that our international students will struggle to come back and we're going to have to see what we do about tuition and and other fees. But yes, we do have plans to try to adjust things to supplement the lost buying power of our faculty, students and staff.
And, and just as a follow-up, uh, it's, um, can you reassure faculty that benefits will not, not shrink, in fact?
Unfortunately, not in a situation where I can assure faculty that benefits cannot shrink. I hope that's the case. So far, we have resisted shrinking benefits, but the financial situation today is more challenging than it has been in many years, easily since the early days of the civil war. And we need to see what we can do. Having said that, we are looking to, uh, become as efficient as we can while, while protecting the basic priorities of the university community.
Thank you. So we've got questions coming in, uh, fairly regularly now, so I'll ask one more FUN question and if the others are not answered, uh, then, um, we'll come back. If the topics are not answered, we'll, we'll, um, uh, come back to it. So, um, let me see.
Martin, I see a couple of questions here.
Yeah.
One, go ahead.
I don't know, there was, there was a question from Fun about, uh, commitment to protecting the value of pensions as well, um, especially for who might be retiring soon.
So there, I think we've been quite successful in protecting the value of pensions. Uh, of course, we can't adjust with what's happened in the market, but we have been able to protect the pensions from the devaluation, uh, of the Lebanese pound.
Okay, uh, from Dr. Afuni in, uh, in FAFS, uh, that, sorry, in business, I'm sorry. Uh, thank you for the recent decision to extend the tenure clock by one year for all pre-tenure promotion faculty. How has this affected the possibility of applying this year if one feels ready, either for tenure only or for tenure and promotion?
Okay, thank you for the, for the question. I was asked the same question yesterday. We left the window open for us to consider what is best for the faculty in the university. The group whose applications are already in, those folks will be, uh, submitted. As for people who would wish to apply next year, that needs to be a discussion in some detail with the board. Uh, most universities have generally said that only very few cases will be considered uh for, for next year, given the disruption, and we've had more disruption than most. My sense is this is a free year to extend, but that requires more discussion between the deans, the provost, myself, and eventually the Academic Affairs Committee of the Board. I have a question here from the Women's Faculty Alliance, uh, that I got earlier in which I was asked about an economic rescue committee working on plans in best, medium and worst-case scenario. So there is progress of this committee. They were coming close to finalizing the university aspect with the medical center aspect ongoing, uh, when coronavirus hit. So there is a good bit of progress. That was going to be the subject of this meeting when it was planned for three weeks. That was going to be the subject of this meeting when it was planned for three weeks ago. But given the dramatic economic adjustments globally with coronavirus, I think it's safe to say that we need more data. But we still do intend to protect those most vulnerable first, and I believe that the faculty are going to do the best we can to protect. Sorry, Martin. Next question.
Yeah, so big-picture question from Hamad Alimuddin in FHS. What is AUB's plan for sustainability and survival throughout the difficult years to come? And what role can faculty play to contribute to such plans?
So, Hamad, thank you for volunteering, and I know this is a very voluntary faculty, in the best sense of the word, voluntary and committed. I believe we're all in this together, as I've said again and again. There are economic, fiscal, and health realities that are changing, and they're going to change much of the way we do business. It probably will be a few years before we can allow people to be in packed classes. We have to see what exactly the lifespan and the real risk is of this virus. But I believe the faculty can play a major role in innovating and teaching and learning and thinking of different platforms to teach. So we're a very classical university. We're a classroom and research-oriented. We may have to diversify our offerings to include lifelong learners. I would like to see an expansion of some aspects of our teaching, such as those led by Abla Sibari, the University for Seniors. I think we're going to have to work closely together to come up with something that will sustain this university. There are many, many articles being written at the potentially mortal and this economy poses to conventional higher education. And I think the way we can work together on sustainability, faculty, students, staff, administration, alumni, and board, is to look at new models of teaching and to try to excel at those new models.
Thank you, Dr. Hori. There's a couple of faculty members who've asked separate questions, two separate questions. So I am going to take the first one from each faculty member and then move on. So Dr. Najat Saliba, can you comment on the current status of the spread of COVID-19? Have we really flattened the curve?
Yeah, it's difficult to say. I would take the somewhat optimistic view, which is, while I know there's been massive under-testing in this country, one thing we can do, Najat, is to look at ICU bed and intensive hospital bed capacity across the country, and that does not seem to be close to being exhausted or to peak. If you look at where we were a few weeks ago, when both Rafi Hariri Hospital was getting a tremendous amount of daily intake, and I know there's close communication between Firas, Abiyad, and Ziyad Razal, and we were told to ready, and we readied very quickly. We have a half dozen patients in our own hospital, but much of our tests in the last week, and we have the most sensitive tests, I think, in the country, have been negative, almost all of them. There's now an outbreak in Sherrin now, but Sayyid al-Maunet Hospital, even Hotel Dhuur, they are not as overwrought as they were a couple of weeks ago. So I do believe that there has been some flattening of the curve, but I think it's necessary to continue to keep the social distancing and confinement, especially in light of a number of new studies, one of which came out yesterday, and suggests that if you're running and someone is running within three, four meters, just by breathing, you have the potential to infect them with the respiratory virus. So we're learning more and more about this and other highly infectious virus. So I'd like to say, optimistically, I think we've made some progress, but no, we haven't truly flattened the curve.
Thank you. From the Department of Architecture and Design, Lina Rebi. Hello and thank you. Some student concerns, as many students in the dorms have had to find alternative living in the city and were distressed by the mood. Dean of students currently dealing with this, and will students be reimbursed?
Sure. So I can tell you, we have plans. The dean of students has been working with the CFO and with the administration and the provost daily. The plan is to reimburse those students who had to leave when we evacuated most of the dorms. And by the way, we still have 50 of our international students who we and they didn't feel it was safe for them to go back to their host countries. But those students who we asked to leave their dorms, they'll be given a credit towards that for the next term, because there's not a lot of liquidity in the country or a credit towards something else. Those students who are graduating seniors, we will be giving them checks. Next question.
Okay, nice, open question from Tarek Khatani in OSB. Any hint of the tougher decisions lying ahead?
I think one of the things that we're looking at is we're going to have to see what our total revenues are this coming year as a university. I don't think it's a secret. The Medical Center has taken a grievous hit from the perspective of patients who have non-coronavirus-related diseases. So the hospital is below 60% capacity and has had drops in its capacity, as have the clinics, for much of the time, from October 17 until today, and we expect that will be in the near future. And a number of students have been unable to pay, and we've also had to assume almost $4 million in loans for students when certain banks canceled on them. So there's no question that there's going to be a substantial reduction in our revenues. I can say I think we'll be a smaller university, almost certainly, in the next days and years to come. We have guaranteed our full-time staff that we will be able to pay them through June 30, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to do that, to keep our word. I'm also optimistic that we'll be able to help faculty on an as-needed basis. But you can do the math. We already have given more than $10 million in additional financial aid, plus assuming the $4 million in loans, many of them that won't be paid. There's been a devaluation in a substantial amount of our own money. We have more than $75 million in this country that the banks have not been cooperating in funds flow. So I think you can imagine that we'll have a much smaller, eventually, revenue stream, and we want to hang on to as many as we can of our stellar community. How we do that is not going to be easy. So I've had a question, including asked to me now, about tuition reduction, rebating the students. But I have to say to the faculty, your salaries, all of our salaries, frankly, come from tuition and from patient revenues. And we are trying to be fair, and we're already planning what happens in the fall. If the summer and fall semesters are also distance learning, what fees will we reduce? What will we do there? I believe that we are being inclusive, in spite of some of the comments, in the thinking process and decision-making process. But very bluntly, I'm going to say this to the faculty. Our job is to run the university. We welcome your input, and we are going to try to be as transparent as possible to let you know in terms of what steps will be taken with regard to future salaries, frankly, moving forward, benefits, and everything else. We're not going to hide, but I can't promise you that things are going to be rosy. In this situation, there is going to be a great deal of shared suffering, and you will not be spared from that suffering. But I'm going to end this particular question by saying we all have a choice on where we work and what makes the most difference. For the faculty members who are struggling to help cover their kids' tuition abroad or to make ends meet, we really do want to hear from you, and we want to try to help those who are most needy. On the other hand, things are dire enough that we are looking at data to see how we can help to the best degree we can.
Thank you. Here is a question that came directly to me from Dr. Marco Bardos in FHS. Is AUB considering moving to online learning education in the near future?
I think that AUB has been considering a component of learning being online, but we were not really planning to go to full-time online learning. I think that should be crystal clear. We really do need to try to move towards a model where we use technology-assisted learning. We integrate that with the superb didactic learning that many of our faculty members provide and add a component of experiential learning. That, I think, will play to AUB's sweet spot, because we're a very mission-oriented institution with outstanding faculty and hopefully the technological ability to deliver at least part of the learning at distance. I know you're all struggling with this technology-enhanced communication. Frankly, I'm struggling with it too, but I do think it will be part of our future methodology.
And now, there was a number of questions on behalf of the WFA. I don't think we covered this one from Randa Salamon, OSB. We understand that the administration is facing a crisis. However, we would like, as faculty, to be included and involved in the academic decisions and the final priorities as the crisis is being managed. But that in the question, how is that being accommodated?
So this is how it's being accommodated. We haven't started putting together our final budget. We will be talking to you. We'll start by talking to the senators, who are your elected representative. We haven't been able to have a senate meeting since coronavirus started. We plan to have one before this month is over. We plan to work together on budgets, and we will be transparent with you in terms of what the priorities are. We would like to include the faculty and help engage you in the academic decisions. It's been a very, very challenging time, and I'm sorry that some faculty feel excluded. But this is really the point where we're still gathering critical data to let you know what we can and can't do. And some of the things that we can and can't do may surprise you both ways.
Okay, let's go to Dr. Germani in FHS. Are you considering any subsidies for internet and data bundles for students mainly? And maybe faculty to support technology-enhanced teaching? This has posed additional financial strain on all.
I don't think, we discussed that at the Board of Deans today, and I don't think that was felt to be the best use of our resources, technology bundles. We are trying to have discussions with various technology companies to see if we can alleviate the costs. But we will have to decide and will be fairly transparent about where the priorities are. Quite frankly, I, speaking for myself, would rather use that money for additional financial aid, which is needed, or additional adjustments in salaries when the opportunity presents itself, or quite frankly, to be able to keep more people employed. I don't think that people have quite picked up on the fact that 10 million people were laid off in the US, even though I've said it repeatedly in a 10-day period, essentially, 10 working days. This is a period where none of us are guaranteed to do what we love to do. I do think the quality of the faculty is such and the students and the staff is such that we want to hang on to as many people as possible, and I would rather use that money to protect people than to make technology adjustments.
Thank you. So we have a question from Maliki Hosseini. It's slightly long, but I think the main point of it is about people being expected to go in person to the Sawaf Center to pick up referrals to specialists. And how does AUB plan to deal with the high chance that this protocol leads to virus spread?
So I basically disagree with that question, but I do think we can come up with an electronic way to simplify the process. I think if you look at the way things are being done at the Medical Center and at the PEC, we're going perhaps above and beyond in the utilization of precious personal protection equipment that I've ever seen. In a normal month, we spend about $40,000 to $50,000 on some of these personal protection equipment. We've spent the equivalent of $1.8 million over the last two months just to protect not just our faculty, staff, nurses, doctors, but also our patients. So I do agree that we need to use technology. I agree with Maliki's basic idea that we really need to become online, not just in teaching, but in process, and not have people go from place to place to get something stamped. I agree with that basic premise.
So this is the third Faculty United question, but it's also been echoed by other contributors. Are there any plans to extend part-timers contracts to become annual contracts? And will they be able to buy into HIP?
At that, at this time, I think it's safe to say we're going to be a considerably smaller organization next year. So I don't think it's fair to assume that all of us will be here in the same time next year. I don't think we'll be giving new contracts or making new contracts longer that are part-time or otherwise. I do think we're going to have to really look at things on a very careful, case-by-case basis to try to maximize the protection of people. But I don't think I'm planning a blanket decision to convert salad part-time to full-time.
From the former dean of FAFS, Nahla Hawala. Are there any plans for relocating our students studying abroad?
So the students studying abroad, believe it or not, were moved abroad when they, more than anyone, reached out to me in a series of about, I don't know, I think Martin and Simone and Mary got these. I got about 25 to 30 emails from students from four different continents indicating that they really wanted to go home because they were worried about the increase in COVID-19 cases in Lebanon. So we managed to get, and this really was remarkable, almost 2,350 students from various places, home, whether that was Lebanon, elsewhere, in a four-day period. Not many want to come back right now, except some of the Lebanese students who are on a junior semester abroad and stuck in France or the US do want to come back. So from these perspectives, we are trying to talk to the embassy and the foreign ministry to see if we can prioritize our students and other students. With regard to transport of our own students, who may be in Africa, or Central Asia, or Europe, or the Americas, or even Australia, moving them back here, I don't think that this is the best time for air travel from countries that have high virus rates. If you look at what happened when the Lebanese government brought some folks back in the last few days, even they were surprised that a number of these students, I'm told, turned out to be, and others, not just students, I'm sorry, I should say, repatriated Lebanese turned out to ultimately test positive for COVID-19. So I think we need to be very, very careful there.
What is the status of the AUBMC expansion, and is it on hold, from Hassan Shad?
Yes, it is on hold, certainly through these economic times. I don't think we're going to be building anything that isn't fully paid for.
From Mahmoud Dar. President Hori, will you be considering instructors in the category of people labeled most vulnerable?
So yes, individuals who are longstanding educators at AUB for many years are considered vulnerable. Longstanding full-timers are vulnerable. Everyone, I think, is very vulnerable right now.
From Abir War. What sort of sacrifices will we be making in regards to layoffs and teaching loads?
So I think you're already making tremendous sacrifices. You're teaching online. You've seen a depreciation of your buying power in the last few months. We're hoping to buttress that a little bit. I have some significant proposals in front of the Board of Trustees that I hope to get through by June. And that is something, to go back to some requests from Rima Karameh, Lina Rebi, so many other people. We do want you to contribute as faculty. And what we're going to try to do is come back with some ideas, and I hope some resources. I really do hope some resources from areas that we touched before, and talk to you about how much we have in terms of resources and the various ways we can spend. And I want to be very transparent with the faculty. I'm not going to say, what do you want to do? What do you think? You decide. But I'm going to say very genuinely, these are the additional resources we have, given the situation. I want to hear from you. I think the deans, provost, and I all feel strongly that we do want to hear your voices. I think the deans, provost and I all feel strongly that we do want to hear your voices. We will make the tough decisions and get the hate mail and violence. But it's a wonderfully creative faculty and I think you can help us make this very difficult, really terrible time somewhat less terrible. You are able to think outside the box.
This is actually the second question from Dr. Ali Shala in FAFS. And but his first one had been covered. Can AUB maintain the high quality of education and research in the light of the austerity measures increasingly enforced across the university? How will that affect the expectations on scholarship and academic excellence in tenure promotions and renewals?
Yeah, so very fair question. I think if you look at where we've placed austerity, it hasn't been in research funding. Believe it or not, throughout this year, in spite of everything, we've maintained our planned increase in research funding. We had a dip in the faculty of medicine that the provost found additional money to make whole and we're finding additional money to make whole. And we believe that by giving an additional year for folks, that will give them an opportunity. And I really, really hope and recommend that folks in all but the most extraordinary of circumstances, take that additional year. And if I could just pause and say that the classic failure of many medical physicians who are physician researchers, physician scientists is to say, at age 40, I want to be a full professor, associate professor, whatever it is. At age 50, I want to be a department chair. At age 60, I want to be a dean. Liberate yourself from these constraints. Understand that we control very little of the world. Take the extra year. If you need extra resources, our plan, the strategic plan that provost and I and the deans are implementing is to try to help those people most vulnerable, at a most vulnerable promotion or tenure point in their career or both, to float what resources we have towards those individuals. Now, one of the challenges, Ali, is travel. It's becoming tremendously difficult to travel because this is affecting universities everywhere. We know individuals who had offers for a research year, fully funded abroad, and now the institutions are backtracking. So far, we haven't backtracked on our word. But I really think that we need to be understanding and somewhat fluid for the next couple of years. And I don't think this is just COVID-19 and I don't think anyone in this audience thinks it is. This is going to be a substantial problem, substantial problem for some time. Tarek Khatani, just to go to a couple of his questions and tie them in with this one, asked whether we can believe that we have less than 1,000 cases when many neighboring countries, including very unfriendly ones, have more than 8,000. Well, as I said, our capacity to test is low, but so far our ICU bed burden is also low and communities are rallying around themselves to self isolate. So it may be that COVID-19 eventually does tremendous damage to the economy of Lebanon by keeping things closed for a long time, which saves lives, saves lives, but damages the economy. And yet, and yet, at the end of it, we have a bankrupt nation here with limited resources, limited credibility and really some challenges forward, which is why we need to continue to try to support our faculty as best we can and try to make the case. And your deans, by the way, are fantastic at making cases for you as to why you are a unique and special individual and what your contributions are.
I think Dr. Rantisi's question, that will be on a lot of people's minds. Is it possible that full time faculty with current contracts through next year could be laid off?
I think everything is possible, Rima. But I think that really would be a last resort and I don't think that's in our plans or in our backup plans at this point. I'm just being very, very transparent, as I hope I've always been with this faculty. Things are very dire financially, okay? And we will be smaller. But are we planning to lay off full time faculty at this point? That is not in our plans. And, you know, to answer one of the questions several people asked, what about our revenues other than those two areas? Of course, there's endowment, the interest from the endowment. There are other donations. What we're trying to do is to protect people as best we can. I started in the beginning by talking about how we have been effective in protecting people's retirement plans. We can't protect them from the market, no one can. But we've been watching their performance and quite frankly, the bottom has been far less severe than that of the market. So and we're trying to protect all of your livelihood, all of our livelihood as best. I hope, I pray that we won't get to what you just asked. And I genuinely don't think we will, but let's see. I'm a pathologic optimist, as some have called me.
That's how we like you, Dr. Corey. From Karim, no surname. Can you please elaborate on the matter of education benefits? How can we plan for next year when we have to commit to schools and colleges from now for the next few years?
Yeah, I think that's very fair. It's a very fair question. At this point, I really would not like to force anyone to change their plans for their children or for their health. That probably would be really a last resort. We want you to plan ahead. If you had plans and your kids are in a fantastic college abroad, of course, we want them to come to AUB because you're bright and your kids are bright. We have every intention to honor our commitment to you. Many of you have been at this university for many, many years. And yes, the financial situation is terrible. But I don't think that now is the time for us to tell folks, guess what? You know, your kid is in a sore bone or a top university in China or Harvard or Columbia or Berkeley or Caltech, Oxford, Cambridge, whatever you want, whatever your kid's dream school is, and say, sorry, things are that bad. But I do want to tell you one tough decision that's coming down the pipe. So every single university in Lebanon, other than AUB, which has educational benefits, pays for the children of their faculty and rarely their staff to study at their university. Very few of them pay even their rates to come to AUB. And I really do not imagine that we're going to be able to subsidize people's children in other Lebanese universities, certainly in unranked Lebanese universities. That's not going to happen. I do think that you're some of the brightest people anywhere. We should be supporting your children going to top universities or they should be going to a public university. Or if they're good enough, which I suspect most of them are, they should attend AUB. We certainly, and I can tell you, we will not be paying for anyone's kids, any faculty member's kids to go to a for profit university in Lebanon. That seems to have silenced some people. Other questions?
Sorry, Dr. Corey, I was. The question came from Dr. Karim Makdisi.
Yes, yes, I know Karim.
Yeah, of course you do.
Karim, if your kids get into great schools, our hope is that we will be able to support them.
I would just tell everyone that we've got five minutes more and there will be perhaps some room for questions. Dr. Al Madin does get a second bite of the cherry for this question, but I'll rephrase it slightly. How are we working with our friends and alumni and donors to support us through this difficult time?
Sure, so I mentioned that and I just want to be quick with my answers. We've already gotten with our, from our friends and alumni and donors, $11 million between student scholarships, around $7 million for needy students. Patient assistance, $3 million, COVID-19 related patient care and testing, $1 million. We're going to keep trying to expand our circle of friends because at some point you can exhaust your own alumni. And I want you all to realize that our alumni globally are struggling, whether they're on the front lines fighting COVID-19 or they're seeing their own retirement plans take a beating or their jobs disappearing. We've had a number of our alumni who've been laid off during this period. So we'll keep asking them, we'll keep asking our friends. To answer Fuad's question with this, we are going after some big foundations. We're going after every funding source we can. And I do think that we really need to look at soft money as a cushion, including the model of soft money to support AUB faculty member's salary. We're not there yet, but that's something that I'm going to be hopefully bringing back at my next discussion.
Hassan Dhaneyi, how worried are you on a scale of one to 10, Dr. Corey, about the future of AUB? Quick answer you can give to that?
I'm paid to worry about the future of AUB, but I would say while I'm worried about everything, I'm confident that AUB will be here long after I'm physically gone from this planet and long after most of you are too. The question is not the future of AUB, it's will AUB better? Will AUB more impactful? I'm reasonably optimistic about that, but I'm preparing for a great, great deal of pain the next few years on all of us. And hopefully less on you and more on me.
A question from Walid Sadeh. With small programs like studio arts and studio arts and theater relying on interactive studio work, would it be possible to consider some level of co-presence with students in the studios under new health protocols?
So Walid, are you talking about a co-presence from distance? I assume because right now the measures are quite strict. You know, we've seen children of AUB residents who live in the same building come a little close to each other and seen the army helicopters go up above. So there may be an opportunity for some distance participation and guiding. I think bringing people close together is probably not wise at this point. I'm hopeful things will improve. And I really do think that we will, we will get through this together. I think, again, to go back to many questions, I do think our international students will come back when things are safe. I do think that we will find additional sources of revenue. I do think you'll be able to keep your jobs, the vast majority of you are doing superbly. We should do everything we can to keep you. And I do think you'll be able to teach your kids abroad at really high quality universities. And no, Karim, not just Ivy League, top 10, top 25 universities, really quality universities. In general, what I believe in is if your kid gets into AUB and gets into a school that's less good than AUB, we shouldn't pay you to send your kid to a school less good than AUB. That's it in a nutshell for all of us. And so we all have to do everything we can to save the resources so that you can have a good retirement when all of this is done and live as dignified citizens of this country and of this world. Because from my perspective, I want to close to this. You are all models. The questions, the ideas are amazing. Keep them coming. Please email me less between 11:00 and 5:00 AM. Students seem to like that and we've asked them to stop. But we need you, I think, more than you may realize and we thank you and we admire. I think we're out of time, but I want to end by thanking all of you. There are a lot of your questions I couldn't get to. I'm happy to end everything. And yes, briefly, Zainah, we will, AUB will honor its contribution to the pension plan for now. And I'm going to end there and say thank you. Keep up some great work. We'll talk soon about next steps, summer programs, the fall. Please do talk to your deans. You have an incredible group of deans and let us know how we can help. Peace to all of you and happy Easter.
So thank you very much, everyone, for joining the virtual town hall. The session has been recorded, Dr. Corey, and we will share it for anyone who didn't catch the full session or who had other commitments. Thank you, everyone, for the questions. Thank you, Dr. Corey, for your answers. That concludes the session. Thank you and goodbye.
Thank you, Martin.